November 5th, 2018, meeting of the Manona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Alder Coeur?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 15th, 2018, meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Are there any appar- I guess there are no appearances, or do we have... Filling out some slips? If you'd like to give us your... Give Molly your slip and she'll pass it down? First up, Sue Carr, who would like to speak in favor of the library operating budget.
Hi, I'm Sue Carr, 42 on 9 Winaco Road. I have the great privilege of serving right now as the President of the Manona Library Board, and I serve with a wonderful group of people who are totally and completely dedicated to supporting the library. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to approve the current operating budget for the 2019 year at the library. Our budget this year reflects some small increases and shuffling of funds for various parts of the non-personnel side of our budget. These changes reflect careful analysis of our spending, as well as our community needs, done by Library Director Ryan Klangbo. The majority of our operating budget this year are attempts to support the true heart of our library, our staff. We have a beautiful building, a great collection, fantastic popular programs, but without our talented and dedicated staff, our library would not be the centerpiece of the community that I consider it to be. Of the 54 libraries in the South Central Library System, Manona has some pretty impressive statistics. Fourth per capita of the 54 in downloads of digital items, third per capita in circulation of physical items, and first per capita in visits to the library. What drives those numbers? When people come into our library, the feedback they give is nearly always about the attentiveness and the knowledge of our staff. But Manona is simply not competitive with surrounding library communities in terms of salary. Because of that, we lose talented people after a relatively short tenure. With the opening of the new Penny Branch and the new Wanakee Library opening soon, we stand to lose more staff. In the past few years, we have lost two MLS-certified librarians who loved the Manona Library, but simply could not work for the pay we were offering. As a community, we need to support the folks who make the Manona Public Library so special and important. So our operating budget, which I hope, we hope you will approve in the next few weeks, is there is to support our most important commodity, our staff. So on behalf of the Manona Library Board, I urge you to support our 2019 operating budget so that we can continue to support the people who work so hard at our library. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, too. This should be an easy one. So there's also an amendment that's been submitted to increase the salary for the library tech services position? Maybe you weren't, didn't know about that?
Higher than what we originally put in there?
Right. Another $2,000 plus other FICA and so forth.
Well, that would be great.
Okay. That's what I thought your answer would be.
Yeah. I mean, that position in particular is very far behind the rest of the surrounding areas.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Gillian Fink would like to speak regarding police officer position in the next budget. In favor? Could you state your name and address?
Sure. Hi, my name is Gillian Fink. I live at 6307 Westgate Road here in Manona, and I wanted to state that I've had great experiences in the last month or so with my neighbors and also with the Manona Police Department. And I would like to encourage you all to consider the budget piece that includes another police officer for our police force. We're trying to engage more of our neighbors. Some are here today, some are here over here, and just wanted to say that we're, I'm appreciative of their work and what we're doing together, like how to add streetlights and how to traffic calm, and you can get the speed sign right in front of your house if you'd like. So I'd like you all to consider supporting them more. And that's all, unless there's questions or thoughts.
Anyone? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The appearances section is closed. There is no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Poop?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Before I continue on, I just want to mention we do have guests from Cub Scout Troop 146 here who are working on their, what exactly is your badge called?
Building a Better World.
Building a Better World. So they're, they came to learn about local government, and they met with Alder Wood and Alder Kitzler and I earlier this evening, and then they went out and worked on learning to fold the flag and learned a few things about government, and they're here to just observe the first part of our city council meeting tonight. So welcome. Glad you're here. Now to move on, we have no unfinished business. Item G2, new business. Item A, consideration of Resolution 18-11-2308, requesting exemption from the county library tax put forth by the library director. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Discussion, who's going to explain? Mark, did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, a little bit. So this is an annual thing we have to do every year to qualify for an exemption from the county library tax. There is a requirement during the year. It's a requirement, I just lost my page, I'm sorry. So we're requesting for the, requesting, during the year, the county levy is made a sumless equal to the county tax rate in the prior year multiplied by the value of the property. So basically, we have to spend, we have to spend a certain dollar amount to qualify for, to be exempt from the county tax. There is a formula, we do qualify for that. So this resolution is to question the city to be exempt from paying with any taxes for support of the county library services. It's an annual requirement every year.
I think it has to be in by the end of the year?
Correct.
Correct? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 2B, consideration of Resolution 18-11-2305, approving an addendum to the intergovernmental agreement to fund a position responsible for stormwater information, education, and outreach coordination for the Madison Area Municipal Stormwater Partnership. And this is put forth by the Public Works Director. This is another one starred for immediate approval, so is there a motion to take it out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Brad, you're going to speak about this?
Yeah, so essentially, this is just to add one more year on to the agreement that we already signed to take us through 2019. The fee stays the same until the end of 2019, and at that point in time, a new IGA would be presented to the council to sign or approve with a new fee. It shouldn't change too much, it's just nominal numbers at that point, so.
We pay a percentage, right?
Yep.
Each community pays a different percentage, is that the...
Yeah, it's based on our population. So there's five categories of population. We fit into category five, and then there's a fee rate based on that size of community.
We did budget for it, a 2019 budget, in the stormwater fund.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 2C, consideration of Resolution 18-11-2306, approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for a crowd control unit put forth by the police chief. This is also starred for immediate approval because there's a time element involved. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Move to take this out of order.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Wally?
Good evening. The resolution before you kind of gives you the history of EPS, which is the Emergency Police Services, where it came from, where it's going. There's a, there's funding through the state of Wisconsin to add an additional 40, 13-member crowd control teams across the state. Currently, in Dane County, there's only one team in Madison Police Department, one for Dane County, and there's a group team made up of Pittsburgh, Middleton, and Sun Prairie officers. So there's only really three teams in the county. Our training group, which is made up of Verona, Oregon, McFarland, Stoughton, and Manona, the chief in Stoughton took it upon himself, well, as a group, we agreed that this would be a good team to form. So the Stoughton chief applied for grants, and he was able to get grants through the state of Wisconsin to pay for equipment, which totaled $14,901, and training for $4,901 for a 13-person team. Manona's participation in it would be to contribute two officers. Other departments, I think Stoughton, Verona, and McFarland are each contributing three officers to make up the 13-person team. There's, when we discussed it of public safety, one of our members, Dennis Hansen, who was the former Director of Training Standards, brought up some good points. When he thought it was a really good idea to do this and have it in place ahead of time, he talked about years ago when they had the walleye spearing issues up north, they were bringing officers in from all over the state who really weren't trained in riot control or crowd control. When we had our ECT10 demonstrations downtown, we sent officers down there that were really not trained to, to control the crowds that this team, these teams would be able to do. We had an issue with, after the Tony Robinson shooting in Madison, where there was a group that was going to shut down the belt line, and they were calling for officers to assist, so we sent officers to that, too, but they really were not trained properly as to how to control crowds. So rather than try to gear up and catch up with the situation as it starts spinning out of control, we just felt that it was time for our training consortium to come up with a 13-person team.
Questions? Attorney Cole has reviewed this agreement, correct? And made a few changes, I think.
There's a few changes, but we can't change it too much because it's already been signed off by Oregon, McFarland, and I believe it's going before Stoughton and Verona's city councils.
Okay. So anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, item 2D, consideration of Resolution 18-11-2307, adopting the 2018 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. Put forth by myself is, I guess this is new business, so we'll just be looking at the proposed budget amendments. Do you have an extra copy of that?
Yeah.
I think we each got a copy of this that Mark had put together.
Yeah, so I made, just before I starts, there's going to be a change. I made an error, there was an error on the 1905 amendment. I made a correction on that, there was actually no effect, and the only one was a dollar in there, which was incorrect. And then there was a new amendment that I forgot to include for uniform allowances. So that's why I reprinted them.
Okay, so there's seven amendments, actually. So I guess we'll just go through these one by one, and the alderists proposing them can discuss what their intention is. Number one, 19-01, to increase library tech services position by $2,000. The total amendment with benefits is $2,284, and the funding balance, sources, the fund balances is sponsored by Alder Spate. Chad, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. So this seemed like an obvious adjustment to our salaries based on information we were given at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and so I think it's fairly self-explanatory for the technical services position.
Does anyone have any questions? Doug?
Just a comment that this position is the only person with a Master in Library Science degree in the library right now, except for the Director.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go on to 1902. To move $636 in sustainability budget from green tier fees to additional intern allowance, no effect to the levy since it's an allocation within a fund. My understanding is we're no longer being charged the green tier fees, I think. This is sponsored by Alder Spate as well.
Fairly obvious, I mean, the monies are already budgeted, and we can use the intern for additional services.
So questions, anyone? Alder Wood?
Is that the only money there would be? No, we have other money, this would be in addition to the other, the $8,300 for the intern.
Correct, yeah. It essentially translates into some additional hours for the intern, and
Correct.
we, I mean, the city could easily employ a full-time sustainability director, but, I mean, just based on the workload, but obviously, we don't currently have the resources for that, but the intern is a, is a resource that allows the city to provide the level of sustainability awareness and programming that frankly, we all demand of them, so.
And we did increase the interns' hours somewhat already in the budget, so this would just be in addition to that. Any other questions? Okay, item 19-03, to add $500 for a community survey for the 100% renewable energy pledge. Use excess 2018 sustainability funding or fund balance put forth by Alder Spate and more.
So this request was, comes out of discussions we've been having on the committee and also in our task force for how the city will go about making a 100% renewable energy pledge, and we felt that it was important to engage the public in this effort. And to that end, this is a request for money, to have money in our budget for a survey.
Questions? Alder Coeur?
Who's completing the survey? Do you have that outlined yet, or?
We don't.
We don't have that outline yet. It was something that came forward from one of our newest committee members, Dan Costello, who's done surveying before, and he's very involved in sustain Dane. So I'm sure that there'll be models from his work and other, that we'll be using, that other communities have, have used to gauge interest in sustainability and renewable energy specifically. Alder Kitzler?
Sorry, maybe you don't know the answer, but is there a projected balance that you're thinking will be there, or?
No.
No.
It's this money that, so their budget's really, they have like a 2018 budget. They didn't spend all their money, so it's basically, goes to fund balance, so just kind of use that.
I see.
Alder Wood, did you have a question?
So as far as I'm aware, the council has not adopted 100% renewable energy pledge.
I have not.
So would the survey be about finding out what the community thinks about doing that, or?
That's a great question. Alder Wood, I mean, I, our perception on the Sustainability Committee is that this is a community that is, will be very interested in seeing us pursue this. I mean, I think we're going to be more following than leading on this issue, but we didn't want to be negligent of the community sentiment. And so we figured that this would be a way to do our homework and make sure that what we end up proposing to the council is consistent with the feedback we get from the community. So we have not made that commitment, but communities around us have made the commitment. And as I'm sure you know, there's been growing scientific awareness that the clock is ticking down much faster than some people had previously warned us, and, you know, there's a recent report that suggests we have 12 years to, roughly, to get on a different track or risk having much more dire consequences, so.
Okay, so the thing, just follow up, then, app with the, so at some point, the Sustainability Committee does plan to bring a proposal for the council to make that the 100% renewable pledge?
That's correct. We currently have a task force where we're trying to do more detailed work before deciding as a committee what we would like to propose to the council.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? I just have a question, and I have a question about your other proposal, too. Neither of these, there'll be another one coming up, were they, they weren't part of your budget proposal when you, the committee submitted their operating budget proposal, so I'm kind of curious as to why, and has the committee actually voted on this proposal? And on, and on your second one?
So...
Has it been vetted by the committee, or?
The committee has not had the opportunity to vote on this yet, just because of the timing of it, but...
We're going to be meeting this week, we have a meeting this week. Okay, but when you were discussing the operating budget, it wasn't included in part of your proposal. Typically, you approve it in your operating budget proposal before you bring it to, and then we vet it and everything, but no one has discussed it, is that... I didn't see the operating budget proposal until the Committee of the Whole was not showing it. I think it was emailed to you, I know, because I was copied on it, too, but...
Yeah, well, it's not, I mean, I don't...
So I'm just saying, I wasn't part of the deliberation, so I can't really answer that, but I do know that both, as it relates to these amendments, you know, they've been part of, as Chad said, part of our discussions in a smaller work group where we've been kind of, where we've been working with UW Extension, Sherry Gruder of UW Extension, to figure out what's realistic for this next year, as well as a new committee member, so. I guess it would just be good in the future if we could have it as part of your operating budget proposal, you know, a few months ago, so we could fit that into the planning for the regular budget.
Absolutely. That's a great point. And frankly, we decided to propose it after our work group because the budget has not yet been approved, and so we thought, well, you know, we might as well try to get this into the discussion, and our committee will meet this week. And then when we all come back in two weeks, we should have, you know, we should know whether or not the committee supports this, and then we can work it into this year's budget if the council decides that that's appropriate.
It just would be better to be able to figure it into the budgeting to start with. Okay, so any other questions about that? Okay, Amendment 19-04, to add $4,000 from fund balance for solar energy and finance services to be added to the sustainability budget, sponsored by Alder Moore.
So as this body knows, the city of Manona has passed numerous resolutions declaring sustainability a top priority. We've committed ourselves to 25% renewables by 2025, we're a green tier legacy community. We passed a sustainability plan and currently have about 16% of our energy generated via solar installations on city facilities. As of the beginning of 2019, our Sustainability Committee chose to focus the majority of its energy on advancing our community's use of renewable energy. Toward that end, during the past year, we've been spending time further educating ourselves to the wisest routes to moving further and faster employing renewable energy in city operations and in the community. Guest speakers to the committee during this time have included experts from Sierra Clubs, Ready for 100 Campaign, from Renew Wisconsin, and from the UW Extension. We just learned at the end of this last week that we're the recipient, along with many of our neighboring communities, of a major Office of Energy Independence Grant to help us with renewable, to create a renewable roadmap, if you will. Bravo, and kudos especially to staff member Brian Boone on that great news. It really is a terrific grant for us to be a part of. But as Chad just referenced, recent truly alarming reports by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and the World Wildlife Fund, the president's decision to withdraw from the Paris Agreement, and extreme weather events including local flooding are clearing calls for local and state officials to step up even further and faster. And Wisconsin is lagging. We continue to generate 90% of our energy from fossil fuels. We need, what we keep hearing over and over again is we need to act now as well as plan for more progress. The clock is ticking. It's anticipated that the $4,000 we've requested will enable us to initiate one, and likely two, very specific and proven solar projects by contracting with outside solar energy and financial services. We need to contract with these services because, as good as Brad is, he has very limited bandwidth to do more than he does now. It's anticipated that these outside experts will assist us in marketing, grant identification and writing, and negotiating with parties that we choose to work with. As much as half of the $4,000 is monies that will be swept into the fund balance because it'll be unspent by the Sustainability Committee in 2018, the remainder would be a one-time expenditure from the fund balance. I'd also like to point out that the Sustainability Committee budget, total Sustainability Committee budget, should this and the other amendments pass, would be $13,251, $8,951 earmarked for an intern. With total expenditures of over $13 million, this $13,000 represents 0.1% of the city's operating expenses. Under those circumstances, I think it's a, it's a wise investment.
Questions? Could you go, do you have, you don't actually have projects approved for this?
No, we're, we expect to initiate two projects. There, we, as part of the research that we've done and education we've done over the last year, as one, as the one project that looks most promising, or most likely, and has been approved to move forward with, the community's already said they want it to be a priority, is to contract with either Renew Wisconsin or another vendor that would essentially be the contractor to spearhead group purchasing of solar in the community. In Madison, they call, what they call it, on the one that, the program that's run by Renew Wisconsin for Madison is called Maddie Sun, as in M-A-D-I-S-U-N. And at last count, I think there were 70-some-odd households in Madison, and so they're able to group buy solar for their rooftops. And by, by doing, and Renew Wisconsin does all the marketing and outreach to residents and all the work that's involved in negotiating, depending on the number of residents that come forward and say, and they've estimated, without any formal contracts, they've estimated that it'll be about $2,000.
Okay. Do, is this going to eventually involve any more city dollars? Or is it all going to, I assume it will all be private investment by residents?
It would be private and resident, yeah. In the case of that project that I just mentioned, it would definitely be private investment by residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the other project?
And the other project, the other project relates to what would one would refer to as a third-party purchase of solar, or installation of solar, and that was most recently discussed with Sherry Gruder, and in much the same way that the city had a third-party install solar panels on the rooftops of city facilities, there's, there's a potential for solar gardens and/or a third-party installation of solar panels that the city would be able to take advantage, but that we would not have to purchase.
Okay.
And so again, in that case, Sherry, as well as other individuals, have said that they, I mean, there's a grant program to focus on energy where we could get up to 50% of the, of the cost there, and there's also, there's also Legacy Solar, which sells solar bonds with a good return rate, and so the exact financing of how that, all that work is exactly what we would use an outside vendor for, to figure out the details of how that might work and where the best installation would be.
And just one further question. How does this connect, or does it have any connection with this grant that we just approved to do this big study?
Right.
How, what is the relationship of that to these two items, or your two projects?
The grant, as I understand it, and as it's been explained to us, would be to do, would be, as I said, to create more or less of a roadmap of the best way would be, as I said, to create more or less of a roadmap of the best way forward, if you will, as it relates to Manona moving faster and efficiently in the, in the use of renewables, but one of the things, as I said, that we've heard over and over again from the experts that we've listened to all year, is that, you know, we've been in planning mode for a long time, and a lot of people have been in planning mode for a long time, and, and these are proven, the two projects that I just talked about are already very much proven strategies to move a community forward, and so we've been encouraged to pursue them. It doesn't take away from the grant at all, the grant would still be in planning, we would still be using that grant for planning, but, but that we should be prepared to not wait until all that plan is done before we do anything. In other words, these are, these are projects that we can break off for obviously a very small amount of money.
So, we're sure the plan would be, wouldn't be proposing something different than these? I mean, it might be proposed in these as well? The plan might be recommending we go that route if we didn't now, or?
I'd be surprised if the plan was, you know, I don't know what the timetable is, but I'm not sure that we know what the exact timetable is. Brad just had the first meeting this week, I think of, or not even yet this week, of all the communities are involved, but, but the results of that planning effort, since it involves multiple communities, I'm sure that, that it won't be completed for months, and our intention is to move forward with this expeditiously.
Okay. Any questions?
Chad, I think I had a comment.
I just wanted to add that, and some of you may know this already, but the Sustainability Committee is very cognizant of the fact that there are two big buckets that we can utilize to move our city towards more sustainable renewable energy. One, of course, is city-sponsored and funded projects to pay for the electricity that we use as a city for city buildings, but then the other, which is more what this $4,000 is intended to, to be utilized for seed money, is to create opportunities for residents to invest in renewable energy as a block, so that we're not dependent on just individuals who happen to have a good site in their yard, or a business that has a good rooftop, that, that invests in solar, but instead, we make it possible, as Nancy said, to possibly have solar bonds that allow people in the city of Manona to buy into a larger solar array, and that's a partnership that we could end up exploring with, with MG&E, similar to what Middleton has done. Or just the possibility, as she said, of allowing homeowners to come together and invest in these systems as a group, so that multiple houses can have renewable energy, even though a few of those homes may not have good sighting, because we are a tree city with a lot of shade. So, our goal is just to try to push this stuff forward on all fronts. We just, we feel an urgency.
And, okay. Think, anything else, Doug, did you have?
On the second initiative, just trying to understand the details, I, I thought you were talking about a third-party installation of solar panels or solar arrays on city property? Is that not right?
No. It would be, no, if it were on city, I mean, if it were on city property, then we'd be talking about a whole different thing. I'm not talking about on city property. I, I don't want to go into, I, I could, would rather not go into the details of some of the places where we think this could be a viable alternative in the context of an open meeting, because I don't think, without, but I, but, but there's some, there's some viability with, given some of the grants out there and some other things, I think, to get this done. And that's what we've been told by the experts that we've been listening to all year.
And is the third-party installation, is that to avoid some of the energy generation restrictions from, through the PSC? I know that was an issue when we were doing the panels on city property. I don't know about-
Right. It's, it's that, and it's also, it's, it's a way to, as I understand it, and you were there as well, so jump in, as I understand it from talking to Sherry Gruder, it's a way to also, in a sense, work around some limitations that we have with MG&E, too, because the power essentially is generated differently, right?
Yeah, the solar, the solar bond structures that have been presented to us tend to have a combination of private money, sometimes potentially some public money, but mostly private money, and, and then bond purchases by citizens who become shareholders in this solar installation. And so, it's complicated, but the models for these sorts of installations are being created as we sit here, and we're very much at the forefront of this movement. You know, people out there figuring out how to do this. We're not going to have to recreate the wheel, which is why this is actually a fairly small amount of money that might allow us to, to figure out how we could do this, what sorts of ordinance changes might we need to enact that would allow us to have something like this. And again, then the goal is, with some seed money from this third-party person, allow citizens to be able to buy in.
Anyone else?
My, I guess my concern about this one is, are we going to end up spending a lot more than $2,000 on the city attorney figuring out the details of it or not? Is it too small? I guess.
We're closed in fifteen minutes.
We're not anticipating that, because we have, I mean, we're working with the best person in the entire state, frankly, in Sherry Gruder. She's, she's negotiated every single agreement between cities with MG&E. She just signed, you know, Beaver Dam just passed a huge initiative, even though it's an extremely conservative community, I mean, she, we're, as Chad just said, we're not reinventing the wheel, so I'm not, and, and I'm, I'm not anticipating that, that it would involve a lot of extralegal work, but on, on attorney calls part.
Okay. I mean, at some point, there'll be a more, if we put the money in the budget-
Right.
There ought to be-
There'll be a lot more details further out, yes, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Alda Kitson?
My only question was, so I know the solar panels that are on the city property-
Right.
Are coming up for either renewal or purchase, or city has to make a decision.
Purchase, right, yes.
Is the, is either of these projects gonna kind of take that into account? I mean, I know they're a little bit separate, but this is something that I think, when I was on sustainability, it was decision time in like two years, and that was two years ago, so it's just something that's on the horizon, so I just wanted to ask how that plays in, if at all.
Well, it's, they're certainly generating a good amount of energy right now, and the committee has discussed it, and it certainly are, my understanding is, Brad, is it the end of the 2000, thank you?
So, the program, according to our contract, was a six-year program, and it started in 2014. So, it would go through fiscal year 2020, but by the end of the year, we would be ready, or set up to either purchase, extend the lease one more year, or request the removal of the panels. So, at that point in time. So, 2019 will be budget year for 2020, whatever the council's decision is. And then the Office of Energy Innovation Grant will be looking at, essentially, it's a clean energy plan for the city, looking at energy efficiency improvements, where we can add renewables, like all the options. And one of the options is obviously the solar program we currently have, and so it will look at that, and it will look at the cost-benefit analysis of keeping it, extending the lease program, or, I mean, buying it, extending the lease program, or removing it, so.
And is that strictly related to the city? Is the program just studying-
Yes.
City-related?
Yes, municipal operations.
Energy, it's just municipal?
Yeah, it's just the, it's just the city's, city's energy footprint for the municipality is, just us, not the, not the businesses or any of the residents.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Okay, we'll move on to nineteen oh five. To add a second police officer, starting on November 1st, 2019, and delay starting the officer, including in the budget until March 1st, 2019, or included in the budget. The savings on delaying the officer's start will allow for a zero impact on the 2019 budget. Alda Kour.
So, because we had approved three officers as part of that whole city original budget, I thought I'd try and get another, another officer in. I've been working with community members on the south end of town. We've had three shots fired incidents in the last year, and there's been a push to have more of a presence in town, and with the strain on resources, with responses to the Walmart, and other kind of Beltline issues beyond our control, we're kind of strapped in terms of placing. I won't go into the detail that Chief Ostranga did with his report at our last meeting or in the committee poll, but the second officer wouldn't impact the budget based on the delay in, in start. We'd use the salary savings from the first part of the year to add the second officer in the second part of the year. Some of the benefits to having an additional officer would be more coverage during shifts, overall less overtime. The sergeants that are on would actually do less roadwork and be actually be able to be sergeants, which would be beneficial, since we're paying them to be sergeants. There'd be less calls per officer, which would reduce stress and increase job satisfaction. We would free up our community resource officer to do a large number of projects in the community, which I think would be a great response to kind of the requests I've been getting from my constituents about kind of building community and kind of doing a lot of crime prevention. You know, some of the things that the community resource officer is struggling with finding time to do, but would like to do if they had, they had more coverage with more officers, things like victim outreach, business checks, talking with business owners about any problems that they're seeing and wishing to address, and neighborhood watch programs, and getting those more vibrant within our city, working on the bike rodeo, home and business safety checks, and then retail theft projects, providing training for loss prevention for employees, and provide additional intel in terms of crime sprees. So, some of those, those are the things that would benefit us if we were able to add this additional officer.
Alda Kitson.
So, that would be about $92,000, you know, not this year, but next year. I'm kind of wondering, what are the ancillary costs, you know? Do you need another squad car? Do you need, you know, are there other things that are associated to needing a new officer?
So, there would, would be a need with the, not with the first additional officer that we're adding in the budget, but with the second additional officer, there would be a need for another squad. However, that officer would be in training, as I understand it, for the first 16 weeks, which I'm assuming that they'd be partnering with someone else and not necessarily needing a new squad for those first 16 weeks. So, that would push us into 2020.
Anyone else? Okay, and as I've stated, Nancy, or who?
Did Molly.
I was just gonna express my support for Alda Kour and the work that she's put into this, and also for, you know, given the detailed data that Chief Ostranga shared with us, just want to express my support for this amendment.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? My concern, as I mentioned at our last meeting, with adding new positions like this, is that then we have to come up with, it obligates us for $92,000 in 2020, and typically, we have maybe $200,000 to work with, an additional spending in a budget, and that has to cover health insurance increases, employee increases, heating and cooling increases, all kinds of things, and if we pass this, if you pass this now, then our hands are tied for half of that money in 2020, plus an additional patrol car, it sounds like. So, that's a concern of mine. I appreciate, you know, that we aren't adding any, we won't have an impact on the 2019 budget, but it's going forward after that that is a concern. Anyone else? Okay. Item nineteen oh six, $20,000 out of the fund balance to increase the number of IT hours contracted by the city, an additional half day per week, and this is put forth by Alders Moore and Kour.
So, this very much relates to conversations that we had during the committee of the whole, which is to say that, you know, we talked then about IT support generally for the city, and whether or not it would make sense at this point, at this time, to be moving forward with a full-time position, or, or teaming up with some other part of the city, like the library, to create a full-time position, because one of the top priorities, the top priority out of the communications assessment that was done, that we did in this year, was our need for additional IT support. And there are currently, you know, a very small number of staff, one could argue staff that are already overly, overworked, that are doing kind of pinch-hitting as IT people when we don't have IT in-house, which isn't necessarily a good use of their time, and it's, it's more or less under other duties as assigned. And as I said, the, the number one recommendation out of our communications assessment, even though a piece of it is not yet complete, because it was stopped while we hired a new administrator, still, a big priority recommendation out of that study was to, to increase the amount of IT support available to the city, and it seems like we're being really good at responding to other research and other priorities that we've identified, and other things that we've researched, be it the, you know, Bike and Ped Committee, or the summer camp and after-school programs, or the additional staff in other areas, and to, to, and so, in the absence of being able to have a full-time person, we just felt it would be important to be, to try to increase the hours, recognizing it's a contract, and therefore not something that would necessarily be a permanent part of the budget. We thought it would be important to support the staff now by adding additional IT hours for this year, with the intention of, over the course of this year, drilling down further as to if we do need a full-time person, what their responsibilities, or how we might, what exactly we need there, whether or not we need somebody that's, you know, $120,000 IT employee, or whether it would be somebody that would be kind of a lower-tech IT person, and then we'd have somebody higher tech on call. And the reality is, is that our IT needs are not going to go away, and they're only going to increase. So, we felt like this was a way to increase the hours, respond to that study that we did, and the recommendations therein, and not tie the city's hands in a way that would not be helpful moving forward.
Anyone? Alda Wood?
Question, really, for Leah. It says that the $20,000 would give us another half day per week. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, we only get a day and a half a week for $60,000?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, okay, I thought they were here more than that, but-
Well, we get off, I think it was fifteen hours or something, or twelve hours a week.
Total between, okay, both, all right. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alda Kour?
I would just like to point out that there's multiple staff that are fulfilling IT responsibilities, including in the PD.
Right.
And so, I, and that's certainly not the best use of their time whatsoever, especially if we're talking about strains on the PD resources, so I pointed that out.
Anyone else? And the staff will be- And the staff will be seeing that communications assessment, or I mean, the council will be seeing that at some point, where this is recommended?
Yeah, I mean, I was out of town, but my understanding is that we kind of put the second phase of that on hold, correct? Until a new administrator has been hired, so, but yes.
Okay. Item 1907. To add 200 for dispatch uniform allowance. Alder Wood?
I was going to say, I'm okay with this, but I don't recall. It's not even proposed.
It was mine.
Alder Core?
Yes. When we were doing the public safety budget, it was noted that we underestimated the needs of the uniform allowance, and so Chief Ostranga asked for additional $200 for dispatch.
Okay, any questions?
I guess, can somebody from the department just explain this in a little bit greater depth? I was kind of confused during the committee of the whole meeting about this issue, based on what I felt to be sort of a, an allowance for regular-type clothing, just of a certain color and nature, and I just am curious, I guess I just don't have the knowledge about if that's typical across departments, if it's just regular clothing, but you're anticipating them following a certain dress code, if that's standard, so if you wouldn't mind just elaborating on that a little bit more. Thank you.
So when we initially hire a dispatcher, we do purchase polo shirts that are embroidered with Monona Police Communications. After that, they can also, they can purchase like black pants, black shoes, to wear as part of their clothing allowance. They can, instead of those items, wear like a business casual, if it's approved, but it has to be certain colors, it can't, you know, can't be flashy, those, those kinds of things do apply. As far as anything that they purchase does have to be approved by the chief, and other departments, for instance, myself, detectives in our department, we do have a clothing-uniform allowance, and we are allowed to purchase non, I guess, the, the uniform that you see Lieutenant Weagle or the chief wearing, we are allowed to purchase other clothing that would be considered, obviously, kind of what you see here, business casual, or that we would, you know, wear on the job type thing.
Mark?
Just one quick thing. Dispatch used to be in a union, and it was, used to be part of their old union contract, so they kind of kept it over when they actually disbanded their union. That was kept in.
Correct.
Anyone else?
Other question for mine, not about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So from the fund balance, with all these amendments, did, I'm just making sure I have this number correct, so that's $26,984.
I don't have the exact number, but that sounds about right.
And how much do we have available in the fund balance, assuming everything else that we've taken out of the fund balance is approved?
Somebody has your books available, it's on page two, the fund balance is estimated, with all the changes, be about $2 million. So we still, roughly, if we take out what was just talked about, will still leave us about 740 some thou, or 730 some thousand, 30 some. So we will still be above the 20% with those changes.
Alder Kitzler, can you repeat the figure that you said?
$26,984.
That's from all the budget amendments.
Yeah, that's just what's proposed.
And, excuse me, Mark, but can you, can you clarify, with that fund balance that you just shared, was that, that, I'm assuming that that's the fund balance before anything from 2018 that we don't spend has been swept, is that correct?
It's all, it's all been figured into.
It's already been figured in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, next item, reports of committees, commissions, boards, et cetera. Alder Groupie?
So I am proud to report that the library received the one Community Many Stories grant for which they applied, from the Wisconsin Humanities Council, in the figure of $10,000, so that, we just found out the final figure, and we're really excited about proceeding with that project.
Alder Moore?
I, I would just like to reiterate the exciting news about the new grant that we just received word of at the end of last week, in concert with the surrounding communities and the Office of Energy Independence. It's a, it's a great opportunity for us, and I want to thank Brad Boon again for, for his work on that grant. Look forward to seeing what comes out of it.
Alder Spook?
No report.
Alder Wood?
This Wednesday at 6 o'clock in this room, the Landmarks Commission, or rather, the Meaden Hunt, the consultant hired by the city to do the citywide architectural survey, is going to be holding a public information meeting from 6 to about 8. There'll also be a representative from the State Historical Society to sort of explain the process and the purpose and what they're looking for, what we're looking for.
Alder Kitzler?
No report.
Alder Core?
Community media will meet on Thursday, and I'm proud to report that we are now full-staffed.
Please go vote tomorrow.
Pardon?
Please go vote tomorrow if you haven't already.
Right.
Is that why Jonah's not here?
Yes, that is why Jonah's not here. Mark?
Actually, I gave my sheet to Andrew, that was the report, the numbers that voted her in, so I just wanted to announce.
All right, I'll let you be the announcer.
So all the absentee ballots are in, and so far to date, that voted, 1,323 ballots were.
Amazing.
At the last governor's election, 2014, we had 851, so the all-time high in 2016 was the highest at 1,985, so just so we get it.
Do any of the staff have any announcements to make? No, I don't want to miss anybody. Okay, the administrator interviews have been set for the 14th and the 16th. Leah and I are still finalizing the, the process in the packet, but you'll be getting a packet of information sometime later this week with the details, and we'll be beginning with a tour of the riverfront at 3 o'clock both days, if anyone would like to attend that, and then going on from there, so. We have one appointment, Joyce Hornberger, as an election inspector, effective immediately through December 31st, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.